Order. Good evening and welcome to the August 5, 2025 Business Meeting of your Ashland City Council. Councilor Bloom will offer the landing acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people on whose ancestral homelands we work, the Akirakutsum Band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We honor the first stewards in the Rogue Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral, uh, excuse me, tribes with ancestral lands in and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original past, present, and future indigenous inhabitants of the Shassa, Takelma, and Athabaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta Village of Kwakwaka, where the crow lights, that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you, and Councilor Sherrell will lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please, Alyssa. Sherrell.
Here.
Dale.
Here.
Bloom.
Here.
Eric Graham.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Duquesne.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Great. For Mayor's announcements, the first one is if you have come here this evening and you would like to speak to the council, the way you do that is by signing up with a form that is in the back along the wall. You'll fill it out and put it in this little black tray right in front of our recorder's desk space. The only requirement is that you be signed up before the beginning of that agenda item so that we can appropriately time the discussion. Make sure when you do that, that you let us know if you are here to speak on a specific agenda item, or if you've come this evening to talk to us about something that is not on the agenda. If it is not on agenda, you'll mark "Public Forum," and that way we'll know when to bring you up at the correct time. I also want to make sure everyone understands that there are no signs in the inside this building, and there is also no applause, clapping, that sort of thing as part of the conversations in this evening. If you want to speak to the council, we want to hear from you, but we need to make sure that we do it in an orderly way. I would like to first offer the Hiroshima and Nagasaki Proclamation. A proclamation in honor of Hiroshima and Nagasaki Day. Whereas Ashland's public commitment to end the threat of nuclear catastrophe dates back to 1982, when its citizens passed a ballot measure declaring the city a nuclear-free zone, the nonprofit organization Peace House grew out of that effort in 1983. The 2025 Rogue Valley Hiroshima-Nagasaki vigil marks the 40th consecutive year commemorating the atomic bombings of those cities. Whereas Ashland became a Mayor's for Peace city in 1998, responding to a global invitation from the mayors of Hiroshima and Nagasaki to work for the abolition of nuclear weapons. As of July 1, 2025, there are 8,497 Mayor's for Peace cities in 166 nations, including 230 in the United States and eight in Oregon. Whereas in addition to promoting safe and resilient cities and a culture of peace, Mayor's for Peace supports the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, adopted in July 2017. It entered into force January 2021 and is legally binding on the 70 governments that have ratified it thus far. Another 23 have signed and await ratification. The Oregon Legislature passed Senate Joint Memorial V in 2019, calling on the President and Congress to lead global efforts to reduce the threat of nuclear war. Whereas Ashland is home to two living Hiroshima Peace ambassadors grown from seeds of trees that survived the atomic bombings of Hiroshima. The Peace Ginkgo is near Thaldin Pavilion on the Southern Oregon University campus, and the Peace Camellia is near the entrance of Lithia Park's Japanese garden. Whereas in June of 2024, the U.S. Conference of Mayors accepted a resolution urging the President and Congress to increase dialogue with other nuclear-armed nations and work to reduce tensions and explore risk-reduction strategies together. Whereas from August 6 to 9, concerned citizens, civic organizations, and faith communities in Ashland and the Rogue Valley will commemorate the atomic bombings of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, remember all victims of nuclear weapons development and testing, and renew commitments to prevent such weapons from ever being used again. Now therefore, I, Tanya Graham, on behalf of the City of Ashland, do hereby proclaim August 6, 2025, as Hiroshima Day, and August 9, 2025, as Nagasaki Day. I invite all citizens to participate in the local Hiroshima-Nagasaki vigil activities. In Ashland, we are better together. And just so you know, the vigil is going to be held tomorrow morning, starting at 8:00 a.m. at the front entrance of Lithia Park, if anyone can join us. And now we move on to approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, the floor is open for a motion to approve the minutes. Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve the minutes of July 14, July 15, and the corrected minutes to June 17.
Second.
Rule call, please. Hanson.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Sherrell.
Yes.
Okay, and we move on now to the consent agenda. Would any council like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. You sure? Okay. The floor is open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilor Dale.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
Rule call, please. Dale.
Yes.
Sherrell.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Great. Can we move on to public forum? Do we have anyone who has requested to speak at public forum? Councilor Duquesne, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did have one question regarding the consent agenda. Some time ago, the council voted on an amount not to be exceeded to be on the consent agenda, and we talked about this before, and we never, I've never seen that amount come back to council, the dollar amount that's not to exceed to be on the consent agenda.
I thought that was part of our procurement update when we updated the procurement process, wasn't that?
Can that come back to council, please?
Yeah, if, just a request to staff to send that, send us that corrected, or the updated resolution or procedure to us.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two people who have signed up for public forum. The way that you'll speak to the council is you'll come up to this podium here, stand there. If you need assistance, if you have mobility issues, we can also bring you a microphone, and you can stay seated. You will have a little light display alongside you that gives you red, yellow, and green. As you're getting closer to your time being up at the 20-second mark, it'll turn to yellow, and when you've reached the end of your time, it will turn red. We ask that you complete the sentence that you are on. When your time turns red, you will also receive, there will also be a chime at the 20-second mark, so when you hear that first chime, know that you still have 20 seconds to finish up your thoughts. Please also tell us your name and the city in which you reside at the beginning of your testimony. The two people who have signed up today for public forum are George Kramer and Linda Adams. Uh, three minutes. Sir, sir. He did, okay. So we have three, so our third speaker will be Paul Muzina. Go ahead. Yes, you can go first. You're the first one I called.
I'm George Kramer, I live in Ashland.
Uh, where's the microphone? Hold on. We'll start you again. It all works when there's a microphone.
Thank you.
So, hold on just a moment so we can restart your timer.
Yeah, I need to adjust the microphone.
Is it working?
Is it working? Yeah, we got it, it's working.
All right.
Go ahead.
I'm George Kramer, I live in Ashland. You have a handout from, that Alyssa has handed out regarding a petition that I have filed with the city recorder. I'd like to thank Alyssa for all of her help in this process. You can read it. It's a simple, single paragraph that amends the Chapter 9 of the Ashland City Charter. And in plain terms, what it does is preserves your ability to create or propose fees on our utility bills unrelated to the operation of the utilities, but it does, it makes sure that those fees don't take effect until they are confirmed by a vote of the people at the next regularly scheduled election. There's been a couple of comments, as this has been discussed around town. I don't have to tell you why it's being proposed, you know why. It does not apply to utility rate increases or anything related to the operation of the utility itself. Some people have said that this is going to somehow impact our ability to respond to a natural disaster. Ashland has never used a utility fee to respond to a natural disaster because that wouldn't make any sense. You use contingency fees in that situation. If council wanted to propose a fee to repay a contingency that was borrowed for a natural disaster, you could do that, and the people would vote on it and approve it. Some have suggested we'll become Josephine County, and every single thing that we do will be hounded by the vote. That's not going to happen, I'm not even going to, you know, really get into that. Some people said that asking for small raises on election, in an election, is costly, and you'll have to go through a bunch of costs to do that. I'm not going to do that either, I don't think that's reasonable, because this is only to confirm at a regular scheduled election. So there's, that, those fees are already built in. In 19, in 1886, Ashland voters passed bonds to fund the city water system. In 1906, the city of Ashland purchased the assets of a private power company and established an electrical distribution model. And a short time after that, we passed bonds, the citizens did, to build the sewer system. The goal was to provide citizens with critical services at low costs and to protect us from greedy private developers. The city's utility monopoly should be run as an amenity to the community, not a vehicle to extract funds from ratepayers to pay for other city needs or wants. The city may characterize these new fees as not being taxes, but they're taxes, I have no choice in paying them. I have no doubt that we can collect the 1,300 signatures required to put this on the ballot in May 2026. I think it will pass, I think you know it will pass too, and I think the right thing for you to do is to put it on the ballot so I don't have to collect the signatures, and I ask that you do that.
Thank you.
Linda Adams, on, I live on Oak Street. I'm here tonight to speak against the proposed amendment to Section 9 of the city charter, which would require a public vote for any new or increased nonutility fee. This proposal, while seemingly democratic, is a flawed and damaging idea that will hinder our city's progress, especially given the positive steps we're already taking to build resilience under the current federal chaos. First, this amendment would create physical paralysis. It would tie the hands of this council, making it nearly impossible to respond to our city's changing needs in a timely manner. We've just gone through a robust biennial process and are in the midst of crucial, long-term financial and strategic planning. These are complex, data-driven efforts, and we are working to update our financial policies and modernize our purchasing to ensure we are being responsible and forward-thinking with our resources. To put a public vote on every new fee would undermine this careful work and inject inefficiency into a process that is already becoming more transparent and proactive. Second, this proposal opens the door to misinformation campaigns. A well-funded special interest group could easily derail a much-needed fee for a public good through emotional appeals and false claims. A new fee to fund park maintenance could be unfairly branded as a new tax, leading voters to reject a proposal that would have a clear, positive impact in our community. This is particularly concerning as we are actively engaged in comprehensive strategic planning for our parks, recreation, open space, and senior services. The public is already engaged through surveys and meetings to inform this plan, and this amendment would create an unnecessary and vulnerable second-guessing of a transparent process. Finally, this amendment is unnecessary and redundant. We already have strong mechanisms for public input. The Citizens Budget Committee, public hearings, committee on commissions, and council and parks commission's own accountability as elected officials provide ample opportunity for citizens to influence financial and policy decisions. This amendment would simply add an expensive and efficient layer of bureaucracy, slowing down our council's ability to govern effectively and ultimately making our government less responsive, not more. Let's not handcuff our city's ability to thrive. We are already making great strides with our improved financial policies and strategic planning. I urge the council to reject putting this amendment on the ballot and encourage the citizenry to allow council to make decisions based on what is best for the common good of all current and future citizens of Ashland.
Thank you. I will remind all of the citizens who are here this evening that this, that we do our work based on respect for each other, and when your fellow Ashlander stands at that podium and speaks to this council, it is imperative that they be given the same respect that you would like if you were up at that microphone. If you would like to speak to the council, sign up. Go ahead, Mr. Muzina.
Thank you, council. I'm mayor. My name is Paul Muzina, I live in Ashland, and I'm presenting the complaint that I sent you on July 6 via email, and the complaint is regarding the way the council handled the June 3 vote for the 2025-2027 biennial budget. On June 3, you voted on a budget that was different than the one approved by the Citizens' Budget Committee. They had designated a certain funding for the childcare grant program, and on June 3, you voted on a version of the budget that had a different funding source for that childcare grant program. And I was shocked that day one, when the deputy city manager, Jordan Ruklin, when she introduced the budget item, she said, she claimed that the decision to change sources for the childcare grant funds had been, quote, "supported by council via motion." This is, this is a serious matter. The deputy city attorney said that you supported the amendment of the 2025 budget via motion by the council. On June 16, you approved the minutes for the June 3 meeting, and you, and you put that on the record. And I sent you the email on June 6 with my complaint documenting that you all never had that vote. Council, I don't want, I know we shouldn't address council specifically, do any of you remember the motion to amend the Citizens Budget Committee recommended budget? Do you remember who seconded it? Do you remember who voted on it? Yet, your city administrator said that that decision to change that budget funding had been made by a motion of the council, and you all knew that wasn't true. You all, you probably remember the votes you've taken on a motion two years ago, and who voted and who made the motion. You live and breathe this stuff, and you do a great job, but I have a problem with the way you handle this. You never had the motion, and yet you put on the record, in the public record, you were all here, and not one of you dared to stand up and say, I, Councilor Sherrell did not vote, not one of you dared to stand up and say, the city administrator didn't stand up and say, nobody said, well, by the way, we never did have a motion, we just talked about it. And I, I mean, I, I'm optimistic about Ashland, I love Ashland, but when I see this kind of behavior, just, I'm, I'll say it, just lying to us, bald-faced, putting it on the record, I sent you all this information, and not one of you responded, and I'm just, I'm disappointed, but I know it doesn't mean, doesn't mean much, but I am really disappointed that none of you had the courage to stand up and say something about the fact that you didn't vote on that motion. So, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Clarinda Meripin.
Hello, my name's Clarinda Meripin, and I am a citizen of Ashland. So many of you may have walked through what was a protest out front, and I've come here to answer the question, why, why do we come and protest? We come and protest because we disagree with your priorities. We look to the future under this federal administration and see that you are planning for a future that used to be, not the one that is. We think we'll need every scrap of funds to cope with this. Our people in our city will not be able to afford both salary increases, these unexpected large expenditures, and the upcoming disasters. One calamity will be housing. We see 44% cuts to the federal housing assistance combined with Medicaid, to which will increase the number of houseless people in Ashland. The City of Ashland Housing Authority provides housing for over 175 families, meaning that 77 will lose funding, that's families. Where do they go? Some will go to families, some will move elsewhere, and others will go to our streets. Some will be our seniors from the Mountain Meadows, or Ashland Sky Living, or Maple Ridge, whose funding will be yanked away, and those houseless will also add to Ashland's burden. Another catastrophe is going to be healthcare. According to the Oregon Health Authority, and this number completely surprised me, as of June 25, 41% of Jackson County is enrolled with some kind of Medicare through OHB. While we can't get Ashland numbers specifically, let us assume that's going to be a fairly significant amount. At the same time, our hospitals may evaporate through lack of funding, and this was according to a statement from the Assante Financial Director as of June 2025. None of this is hidden. Look to the nationwide drop in tourism that will directly affect Ashland's revenue. Look to the rise in tariffs, which will not only affect us, and do affect us, but will significantly increase Ashland's budget. Look to the pressure being exerted on sanctuary cities and sanctuary states, of which we are one. I understand we just got a loan for our water treatment plant. Will the federal administration use it to pressure us to rescind our identity, or just to disband the Social Equity and Justice Advisory Committee, or perhaps to force our police to aid in ICE deportations? Look to the cuts in food aid, SNAP, school lunches, and the decimation of senior meals programs starting in 2026, which will vastly increase hunger. Now is not the time for raises nor unexpected and surprise increases. Now is the time to see these economic realities as they come barreling towards us and plan for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We are now to public hearings. The first is the second reading of ORD 3270, removing AMC 4.32 alarm systems.
Mayor and council, Director Berry is here as a follow-up to the first reading to remove the alarm system code from our code as it's no longer applicable. With that, I think she can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Question, Councilor Bloom?
Yes, sorry, not a question, I just want to say it's good to see you, and you're appreciated.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Councilor Bloom.
I move to approve second reading of Ordinance 3270, which removes Chapter 4.32 Alarm Systems from the Ashland Municipal Code.
Second. Discussion?
Housekeeping, and it's going to save us some money, so glad we can get rid of that.
Would you care to speak to your second?
Ditto what he said.
Further discussion? Rule call, please, Alyssa. Kaplan.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And we move on now to the second reading of and adoption of findings for Ordinance 3261, and ordinance amending the officially adopted physical and environmental constraints map, removing the locally adopted Ashland Modified Flood Plane from Hamilton Creek. Planning action number PA-T3-2025-000012.
Mayor and council, as the agenda items states, we're amending a map. We saw this last time when it was approved, so this is the second reading. If you have any follow-up questions, I'm sure they're happy to answer. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Bloom?
Thank you. I move to approve second reading of Ordinance Number 3261, amending the officially adopted physical and environmental constraints map, removing the locally adopted Ashland Modified Flood Plane from Hamilton Creek, and adopt the attached city council findings and conclusions of law.
Is there a second? Counselor Bloom?
Second.
I appreciate you also, Brandon.
Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, it makes sense that we're amending this map, and I hope the good work gets to get done with these modifications. Thank you, staff.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Dale?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We are now to new business, or unfinished business, excuse me, ratification of three-year labor agreements between IBW Electrical Union Local 659, IBW Clerical Union Local 659, LIUNA Local 737, and Resolution Number 2025-22 clarifying certain employment conditions for management confidential and nonrepresented employees.
Point of order, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Yes. Mayor, I move to divide the questions so as to consider separately the question of the three labor union contracts and Resolution 2025-22, and in that order.
Second. Okay, the rule, the vote is taken without discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
So, mayor and council, as a follow-up to yesterday's study session, Director Taylor has some more information, including the divided motions as requested, so I will let her provide a little update based on some questions from last night, and then we are happy to answer any questions.
Molly Taylor, HR Director. So after a good discussion last night at the study session, I did bring forth some additional information to clarify some comments and questions that we had. Last night, I did ask Ms. McGrath of McGrath Human Resources Group to provide more information on how the salary schedule was developed. I don't know, hopefully you can read that. That is her reply.
Molly, maybe you go ahead and read it out loud if you can.
Okay. So she says, "The market data once gathered is analyzed by each position with a proprietary formula outliers are eliminated, either high or low, to develop an average market rate. The salary schedule is developed so that the midpoint, or step five, represents the average market rate for the, of the position. An employee should reach the average market rate within three to five years, once they are fully capable and competent of performing the duties of the position. Step one aligns with the average market minimum, representing what the market has determined to be the minimum salary for the position. Position placement is accomplished through four different data points, the point factor system, the market, the market compression, and internal equity. Thus, there is not one factor when placing the position within the salary ranges." Some of this information can be found at page 17 of McGrath's Comp and Class Report. I would also like to add that not only did the study provide a recommended salary schedule, it also reviewed our benefits, updated our job descriptions for each position, and reviewed the scope and responsibility of every position in the city. I also wanted to provide some additional information based on our list of comparables that we discussed last night. These are cities above and below Ashland based on population, so this is showing the various nonrepresented salary ranges. This encompasses various positions such as the Park Tech One, Executive Assistant, Waste Water Supervisor, and Director. Like I said last night, this is not a like-for-like based on position, but I did want to provide you with a more comprehensive picture. And then, as requested last night, I have separated the suggested motions here.
Questions of staff? Counselor Bloom?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Yeah, so I, you know, I guess I understand it to be, yes, I move to divide the question. I figured that we would also ask questions separately about the union contracts and then have a separate conversation about the management resolution, but as that seems to not be the case, I'm happy to dive into that. One of the concerns I have, and I'm hoping that staff can kind of enlighten us a little bit on, on process here, it is no surprise that Parks employees are looking to unionize and are awaiting authorization from the Labor Board. Currently, Parks employees are included in this management resolution, as, as defined that, that is in the packet, and kind of sets, and a lot of our forecasting and how we're looking at what the expense of this resolution is going to be is based on those numbers. However, when and if, of course, Parks employees do unionize, they would have the ability to negotiate and bargain for that contract. Now, it's, it could go multiple ways. It could be more, it could be the same, it could be less than what is outlined here, but I'm curious, because we've identified cuts to pay for the resolution, to pay for the salary adjustments, and if they come back and, let's say, negotiate higher, then all of the forecasting that was done and the cuts identified would essentially be moot.
So, we do not have a decision from ERB yet. We would approach this like we have approached all negotiations, and that is bringing forward council's philosophy. We've had, discussed with you what we are doing, and we would continue that, so we don't know what is going to happen, just like we don't know what's going to happen with sergeants or with fire.
Right.
And I think in addition to that, the Employee Relations Board is deciding whether or not Parks employees will join LIUNA, or if they were, will be allowed to have their own separate union, but per law, we must treat them as a status quo, and the status quo is that they are included in the management resolution.
No, absolutely. I don't, I don't disagree with that, and I appreciate the context you're giving, that they, you know, we do treat them that way, and this is how we put them in the salary schedule. I guess what I'm saying is that you're presenting numbers identifying cuts so to pay for something. So is the, what is the plan, I guess, if, if those changes, if the unions come in at different wage numbers? Is the plan to come back again at a future meeting and propose additional cuts to adjust to that?
So we would need to, you go through the bargaining process with the Parks employees, but they would also need to justify any sort of additional ask outside of our compensation report, just as all the other unions have had to do so.
Great. I appreciate that. I just think that, again, we're putting the cart before the horse, and we have no plan of how we're going to pay for some of this if those changes happen, which is why it's important that we forecast ahead of time.
Counselor, do you have another question? Do you have another question? Any other questions of staff? Counselor Hanson?
Yeah. Molly, I'm curious, the scenario in which Counselor Bloom is highlighting us with our, with our three negotiated unions currently, what, in your experience, at this point, what is the chance that these three unions might come back and try to renegotiate for, for anything different? Slim to none?
Like, lower?
Is there any, is there any chance?
I mean, it's already been appro, it's already been presented to union members, and they have approved the, the changes.
So we're, we're, the question is more aimed just specifically at the non-unionized groups that we're discussing, Parks and sergeants. Okay. Just to separate those out. Thanks.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. Just to kind of piggyback on what was brought up earlier, Molly, I believe I read in this packet somewhere that there is no negotiating down. Where it is is where it is. The only where it could go, the only place it can go is up. Is that correct?
That is if the council does not approve the CBAs.
That there is no going down?
Correct.
It can only go up?
Correct.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, Counselor Bloom's question raises a question for me. What is, do you have a sense of what the timing is for, you know, obviously, we don't know when the board would actually rule. The question is, if, if we approve a three-year labor agreement for these non-unrepresented employees, at what point do they take up a negotiation for a collective bargaining agreement? Could they do that immediately, or would that be after, after the contract, after the current term is ended?
So I'm just going to jump in with a partial answer to that question and then a partial bit of, of legal advice. So, the first being, usually it takes about five months to, to start union negotiations once they send it in. However, just for purposes of this discussion, I want to be very clear that public employers do have an obligation to negotiate in good faith, and if we're talking about woulds, shoulds, coulds, and we employ tactics that may be seen as delay or in any way either supporting or going against any employee group forming a union, well, we could be potentially exposing ourselves to liability there. So I would just ask that we stick to the unions that exist, because there's a potential that any groups could be, form a collective bargaining union. So just, everyone be very cautious as to the discussions that we're having. We can speak clearly to the unions that have been established and that are up for negotiation, and then, you know, these terms, I believe, are, you know, a three-year term, so they're not coming back, to answer your question, they're not coming back for another three years.
So the hypothetical is kind of off bounds. We shouldn't be...
It's, it's getting close. I don't want to have anyone inadvertently have the appearance of bad faith.
And a follow-up question to that, Johann, and that is that regardless of any group that, that chose to, to organize inside the city, those contracts would come before this body for approval?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Dale?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, quick question, Molly. So... I guess where I'm at, a little, you're off, you're on. Thanks, sir. I, I'm confused. I know we weren't part of the negotiations and so forth, but when this came, you know, last Thursday in the packet, I saw that, and maybe I just missed it, that it was, that we were using the new comp and class tiers. So I guess my question is, is as we were starting with this, I mean, you've said five, six months or so is the negotiation, I mean, during budget and so forth, I guess I'm kind of interested in, in certainly different models were on the table so forth, assuming the comp and class, if we didn't go with that. How did it affect the budget one way or another? Maybe this is for you, Sabrina. I, I don't, like, where is the information there to be able to say, or this is just what we landed on and so forth, this is what it is? I, I don't know what I'm, what would it have been had this comp and class not been available at the time, given, we'll say, historical union discussions?
Yeah, historically, CPI is the best indicator
Yeah.
...of what we do, unless we're aware of, you know, factors such as we fall in significantly behind overtime versus other communities, that would come into play as well.
May I, mayor? So I, so I guess just to, just to get right down to the numbers then, if you were to have run the numbers just using CPI and come up with a, what we'll say, cost of, of the agreements to the city, and then compare that against what the, how everything lands relative to these new tiers, is it more or less? And I, I guess I'm just, I, I don't know what it would have been. I understand that they've been approved, that's been negotiated, this is, this is a hypothetical, but I'm kind of trying to compare where we are relative to historical trends and where we would land.
Yeah, so if we had used CPI, it depends on the individual person
Right.
...whether it would be more or less to what we're offering now, but overall, as a package, CPI was 2.78, I believe, last year, so we would, you know, start with that, but then you come into industry such as IBW Electric, where we're competing against, you know, private market installers as well, and so what the unions are doing are bringing in their comps to justify their case, and this year, the city had our comps to justify our case.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Sherrell?
Yeah, do we have any idea on how long it's going to be until we get those other two active unions to TA something to come forward? Do we know where we're at in the process? Are we headed to mediation or arbitration, or can you give us kind of a down-the-road look of what we might expect as they bring their own comps?
I would say probably a few months still.
Copy. Thanks.
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just hoping you can confirm what percentage of the total FY '25 cost increase is attributable to raises for executive management exempt supervisors as opposed to non-exempt supervisors and frontline staff?
So there's a spreadsheet for that. Hold on. So the very last attachment in the packet for this item. So if you look at annual wage increase by group versus budget, we have those wages kind of divided out by executive management supervisor, frontline staff, clerical laborers, and electric.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I got lost.
Yeah, it was just about what percentage breakdown was attributable to raises for executive management and exempt supervisors versus the other group, and I do appreciate that that was in the packet, and I just want to point out that executive management exempt supervisors represent 61.15% of the cost in this resolution as opposed to 38.85% of our frontline staff.
So, Counselor, what is your question?
Yeah, well, I had the first question. My follow-up question to that is, can you explain through an equity lens how, how that's justifiable?
How is what justifiable? Sorry.
That 61.15% of the costs of this resolution for 2025 is for executive management and exempt supervisors versus lube techs and, you know, people kind of on the, on the lower pay scale.
Within the unrepresented?
Yes.
So there's no lube techs there in the laborers. So I think when you're looking at the unrepresented resolution, you're looking at mostly management because they cannot be in unions, and so they're all going to be grouped in this particular resolution, and I think Molly probably has a better handle of exact job descriptions within this, but you have, you know, our park supervisor, everyone, or up to a director, so it's kind of a wide variety of management found within that, and then the rest of the non-management staff found within the unrepresented are people who have access to confidential information that could potentially be used to skew union negotiations, and so they are not allowed to be in unions either.
So that's, that's why it's higher percentage of the, of the total cost of the resolution?
Correct. The rest of the CBAs do not have supervisors. The only exception to that would be our fire union, where the battalion chiefs act in the supervisory role, but are still in the fire union.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you. I think I found a better way to ask what I was trying to get. When we had the slide last night, we were looking at the, the different items that we found budgetary-wise, the, I don't know if you have that up or not, you can get there, it doesn't necessarily matter. What portion of those costs, if any, are attributable to just these three agreements? Or were all of these three budgeted as part of our 2527 approved budget?
Sorry. Part of it was budgeted, right? So we did 2% across the board. That's not where we landed with the TAs, with the unions, and so part of it has been budgeted, part has not. So when we're looking at an individual employee, depending on that has not. So when we're looking at an individual employee, depending on that position, they're hitting different funds or multiple funds. So for example, you have someone like the fleet mechanics, they're going to hit multiple funds because they work for multiple departments.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. So when we budgeted for 2%, was that, was that kind of a, and I don't, I don't know. I know you guys have done this more than I, but when we were, we were kicking around 2% or when we budgeted for that, was that what we reasonably thought it was going to be? And then this was kind of out of left field to be whatever it's going to be? Or, or were, or we were expecting it to come in a little bit higher? And the only reason I'm asking is just to kind of, kind of back solve and figure out where we, where we may have potentially missed there.
So I think we thought we were going to be closer with the common class, given the past TA CBAs as well as the past unrepresented resolution with the four 3% and 3% COLAs. We had hoped that those had brought people further along. What we didn't really consider was the fact of the market pressures on certain positions being so high that they would be significantly behind even with those COLAs, most likely due to the fact that we haven't had a comp and class since 2008. And so there's been no market adjustment for any position as industry has changes, changed, excuse me. And so what you have is a group of people kind of marching through time, kept in a, in a bubble within the salary schedule without adjusting for the fact that there are very different jobs potentially within each of these agreements.
Counsel Dukane?
Thank you, Mayor. So I believe you said there were no raises since 200...
No, there was no comp and class since 2008.
No comp and class. And I did read early on that is, I think, 2019, there were no raises since then. However, there have been people, to my knowledge, and which is minimal, that have been put in different positions whereas they are now making more money because they've been promoted to other positions. Is that correct?
So we've had COLAs ongoing since 2019. But yes, staff have been promoted. And so we've had open positions in a higher level and they've applied and been selected for that position. They've been promoted, yes.
And, okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Counsel Kaplan?
Yeah, so I think this is, it's an interesting conversation about the, what, what we've had up until this point and then the comp and class study. Because am I correct in understanding that what we've done since around 2010, whenever the comp and class study was completed, I think it started in 2008 and was completed a little bit afterwards. At that point, we, it set up all of the positions and all the scales. And there was a mishmash of scales of different, you know, different sorts. I don't know how they arrived at all of that. But some of those jobs changed over the interceding 15 years. But the people marched, people in those positions marched along getting increases based on the COLA for that particular year. And I, you did include in the packet the COLAs for each one of the contracts. So if we, the laborers, L I Una, you know, they're, they were getting 2%, 1.5%, 2.6%, 4%, 4%, 3% without regard to what's actually happening to the, the underlying job. And that's the reason to do a comp and class study periodically. So when we, when we debated, when the, when the Budget Committee in 2023 decide, and the council decided to approve a comp and class study, what was the purpose of doing that? Could, could we have just simply gone on the way we were and done COLA adjustment, whatever it was, as Counselor Dale suggested? Could, we could pick any number we want and maybe the negotiations with the bargaining units will, will, will come down to that or maybe they won't. But why do we, why did we bother doing a comp and class study if we could have simply just done the COLAs?
Yeah, I think there was recognition that we were having trouble recruiting for certain positions because they had fallen so far behind. I think there was also the recognition that the city was not in a strong position to make an argument during negotiations because we hadn't done comp and class. And so when we are going to the table, we didn't have a lot of ammunition to kind of give back to the comps that the unions were putting forward. And so this allowed us to ensure that we had that data independently sourced, not coming from the unions, as well as recognizing that some of our positions had fallen behind and we needed to adjust for those. There's also the recognition that we needed to make sure that we had internal pay equity going on between positions because things had been kind of just kept and moved along. Excuse me. As well as recognizing that, you know, our positions are often different given the scale of services we provide in the city. So how do we make sure that we're capturing that role and responsibility within those job descriptions? So there was several goals with that study. I think at this point, it's been very helpful to be able to be informed, sitting down at the bargaining table with the unions, to come together. And I think with the unions, the cities had a very good relationship and helping make the argument of making those adjustments. And so that was why the proposal was to get them on the wage scale and to have the unions agree to that. When some union members are getting very little versus some getting a lot to make those market adjustments reflected an understanding of those unions of the need to ensure that their whole group was adequately compensated and these discrepancies didn't continue. Because for some in the union, a flat COLA would have been better versus just putting them on this wage scale.
So if I'm, can I, just to make sure that I understand, because there was a lot there. What I'm understanding, what I understand from comp and class studies that I've seen in, in the past is, you know, they're pretty extensive exercises. And, and what they reveal is that some positions are actually undercompensated relative to the market and they'd need a big adjustment, which I think you just, I heard you just say is that within the union, some of those employees, you know, were unhappy with, with a simple COLA negotiation, would have been unhappy with a simple negotiation when they're in own individual perspective. Whereas other individuals are actually paid over what the market is and they were benefiting by having a COLA rather than having, you know, a, a review of where they're, where they fit in the market. Is that, is that a fair assessment? Is that what you said?
Yes.
So that's, that's the reason why we do a comp and class study is to really readjust and then just, you know, start from here again. And then there'll be, so that's why this structure of these agreements are, make the adjustment to the comp and class, this new structure. And then from there, it's a 2% COLA for 2026 and a 2% COLA for 2027. Probably what will hap, maybe what will happen is subsequently, though, well, there'll be a couple of COLA years, maybe another three COLA years, and then there'll be another comp and class study. Is that how it works?
So the recommendation out of the report is, yeah, you kind of hold on to these numbers for a few years and then you're going to need to go back and, not as extensively as we did this time, but pull comps again and see where you're falling within the various industries to ensure that you can continue to adequately recruit and retain certain positions based on that industry.
Right. And the real advantage of this time is there's a wholesale review of all of, of everything and a restructuring of the scales so that they're all consistent.
Yeah, it's fairly rare to be able to do every position within an organization. So this was a pretty extensive review.
Counsel Hanson?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Molly, we've been really getting into some, some, some nitty-gritty. I was hoping that we could zoom out a little bit. And after our comp and class study and after our approved labor negotiations that we have on the table now, where do we land? Is there, is it okay to generalize and say like, City of Ashland is landing on this spectrum of like employer of choice, like top pay, top everything, or, you know, like bottom of the, of the list? Where, in general, where are we landing at now with our, our new labor negotiations with regards to all those positions?
So the goal is to hit it mid, mid-market?
Did we, did we get there for most of our positions?
Yeah. I, I will say that none of the positions that were evaluated, which was all of them, none of them came back frozen or overpaid.
Okay.
So...
Well, that's great. And I'd like to just take a little PSA to say thank you to all our city employees for all the amazing services that we have here. I know that there's some other things that you did to, to sweeten the pot. Could you just highlight the, the higher-level things that we're doing to help our city staff in lieu of not being top-tier employer of choice, the highest-paid employer in the valley? Like, what else are we doing to help out city employees?
Yeah, so that was, that was another slide. Let me get the paper here. Yeah, so we, if I can go back. There we go. So we also, with the wage adjustment, we increased the HRA VIBA by a half a percent. We increased the deferred compensation city match by $50 a month. We added three personal days, the Christmas Eve holiday. And so that kind of, we found that wage, while it is important, some people like time off, some people like retirement buckets. So this kind of covered everything as a nice round package for everybody.
All right. Well, thank you.
Counsel Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just kind of going back a little bit to what Counselor Dale was asking about a little bit ago now at this point. So typically, you know, some governments require strategy, guys, compensation, not the other way around. And so I'm just curious because it feels like we're, we're in this direction of, well, let's do this and then we'll figure out how to pay for it. And then we can kind of come back later if something changes and we'll figure out how to pay for that, rather than kind of doing that future planning. I'm curious, was there any conversation, consideration given to having kind of that long-term financial modeling, staff efficiency review, the, the organizational restructuring, having that conversation, understanding what the totality looks like? So that way we can plan for these kind of increases rather than being just responsive to them?
So I think it's, you know, known moving forward, there will be some sort of negotiation going forward every few years with the unions. We don't know the magnitude of what that's going to be. And it's typically based on, like I said, CPI is a good, a good measure of that. So, you know, what the city has been looking at, knowing that we need people to provide the service, is making sure that we have the right number of people that we're, you know, doing things appropriately that way. And part of it is the strategic planning that we've been talking about to figure out what level of service we're looking at. So there is kind of this ebb and flow of this process where, you know, we don't know where we're going to land until we land there and then we have to adjust. And the timing is never ideal, given the cycle of budget versus the cycle of union negotiations versus whatever else is going on in, in the bigger world. And so the city has and will continue to need to adjust to ensure that we can, you know, adequately recruit and retain, excuse me, employees with these CBAs and, you know, employment contracts.
Quick follow-up if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
So are you suggesting that it's impossible or very unlikely to be able to be proactive when having these conversations and that we should prepare ourselves to just constantly be trying, being reactive and trying to pivot?
No, I don't think we'd be reactive. I think we know, you know, for example, the general fund, we increase that about 3% every year. And so we know we have kind of these parameters that we're looking at. But there are factors, especially the last few years with materials and services going up, things like that, that, you know, there is a, a bit of reaction by everyone with, you know, recent events. But, you know, we can continue to work on long-term projections, you know, with kind of a wide variation of potentially what, what could happen so that we're prepared. And then, you know, council plays a role in that too by ensuring that we have, you know, steady rate discussions for our enterprises because that includes, you know, the compensation for the personnel who run the enterprises as well as discussions about what are the priorities of the council for funding things because that does determine what services we provide and the personnel that we need.
It's possible to have those conversations before just kind of jumping into large compensation changes, especially knowing what we have a schedule with unions. Thanks.
Counsel Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I think my, Counsel Bloom hit on, I guess what I was going to ask was relative to those, that financial modeling. Because what I, what I, I appreciate this and I appreciate all the work. And I certainly stipulate what Counsel Hanson and Counsel Kaplan had said about, you know, employer of choice. What I worry about is, are we concerned about, we've rightsized, we get it right. I feel like I'm, like this is a snapshot and it's, you know, dialed in right now. But without having that information, are we worried that we might not be an employer of choice in two years, in three years? Because potential employees might say, well, the, the, the city is struggling. I see that they have to do something. I see that the funding is not there. I see different things and we haven't done the modeling. And so we, we were employer of choice today, but we're not employer of choice in 2028 because, because we didn't model out what that's going to look like. And so now we're, you know, you just kind of, it appears that we might not be in the best financial position because we didn't plan. So how do we account for future proof, future-proofing being the employer of choice, knowing that there are financial realities? We're obviously at an inflection point, I would say, larger than the City of Ashland where the, you know, funds just absolutely may not be there. And we just have to be careful because unlike a private business where people voluntarily, you know, can choose to put their money there, we, we have to be careful with, with how we move forward with that. So I guess, and I guess as a question would be, how quickly could we do financial modeling?
So we'll work on this for the fall retreat that was requested yesterday. But I think, you know, this discussion tonight is a good example of being an employer of choice. So, you know, we've seen, you know, a similar situation the last time we brought contracts forward where, you know, it was very volatile and we had a lot of staff exodus because there was a council that was more volatile and people feel uncertain during times like that when leadership is questionable. So there's a lot of factors that play into being an employer of choice. You know, compensation is just a part of that. So having a good culture within the organization you work for is key, having good leadership. And then, you know, we'll continue to work on financial modeling and staff has been very, with the unions as well as unrepresented staff, has been very great in trying to navigate how we thread the needle on this by ensuring that, you know, staff feel confident remaining here but also understand that we're going through a big period of change. So they're going to see technology come on board that we haven't had before. And there's going to be structural changes in terms of what staffing looks like, in terms of what positions look like, in terms of cross-training across departments and things like that. And so I really want to give kudos for, you know, the department heads who have helped me kind of navigate that with their staff and sent out the message. Now, all staff is not going to be excited about that message because change, good or bad, is, is difficult. But that's, that's where we are. And so, you know, this past budget, we had to reduce staffing by about six positions. I would assume over the next, you know, year and a half, we continue to see some structural changes in how we staff different departments. And part of that discussion is discussion around bringing on software and technology, more, you know, less face-to-face customer service, more online customer service, implementing AMI, things like that that affect, you know, all, all funds.
Thank you.
Counsel Dukane?
Quick question. Thank you, Mayor. So something that was touched on earlier and you mentioned timing. Looking at how we had a budget, union, taxes hit us, raises in our utilities, all of these things hit the community all at once. Moving forward, and I heard you mention moving forward, in the next biennium, we know, just like we know Christmas comes every December 25th, we know that it's going to be budget time again for the new biennium, new negotiations with unions. Is there a way that we can, something alluding to Counselor Bloom, what he said, not put the cart in front of the horse and start to look at the possibilities and be more proactive? So before we pass a budget, we know that this is what we have out there. This is what's looming. This is how we need to pay this.
So I think it's important to keep in mind that the budget is a best estimate of the operating funds we'll need for that biennium. It's not set in stone, per se.
No.
So I think, you know, in times of the next biennium, we'll be in the middle of these contracts and they will come up again. And so we'll have to do the forecasting like we've been discussing of what we think the union contracts will land. And that's what will be put in the budget because both of these things are just a continual process.
And, and I understand that. And it kind of speaks to what was suggested last evening about the open retreats, whereas we can all talk about this and be in front of it instead of chasing it. of it instead of chasing it. So I do look forward to our retreats.
Counsel Bloom?
Thank you. This one's, uh, for you, Johann, kind of a legal procedural question. Very specifically, legally speaking, uh, is it possible for us to have a conversation and a motion to be made that would essentially adopt in part of the resolution and not the whole resolution? If the motion was stated, of course, clearly.
Anything is possible if you believe. No, I don't know. I have no idea. Um, there are parts that can be pulled out. I, that's a very lengthy resolution. Um, there are employees that are, as I mentioned, we discussed this briefly, under contract. Um, and there are, it would take, I don't think it's something that can be done verbally. I think it would be something that would be, we need to sit down and look at it. There are a lot of potential pitfalls with trying to separate something like that out. This is, like, Director Taylor mentioned, you know, there's a lot more than just salary involved in this resolution, uh, including people's health insurance, you know, that sort of thing, where I would not feel comfortable providing sound legal advice as to a verbal motion that is made, if that, a verbal adjustment or verbal breakout.
That does make sense. So quick follow-up, if I may. The appropriate thing to do, if this body so chooses, to, to kind of find a middle ground, would be to essentially make recommendations of what, what middle ground might look like, of course, after deliberation debate, and to request that that comes forward at, at another date, preferably sooner than later, of course. But that would be the cleanest way to move forward.
Rather than try and verbally hack-
Separate out.
Resolution?
Right.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
So I am going to take public comment at this point. We have four people who have signed up to speak on this agenda item. You will follow the same procedure as before. You'll speak at the podium, uh, keeping an eye on the visual monitor and listening for that first chime, which tells you you have 20 seconds left to complete your, uh, your comments. There'll be three minutes each, Alyssa. We have Lita Shapiro, I mean, uh, Alex Sol, Gail Patton, and Linda Adams. Is there maybe an additional? Can we see if there's some, uh, any additionals? And George Kramer. So Lita Shapiro will be first, followed by Alex Sol.
Am I on?
Yes. Just make sure you get in close, so we can hear you.
Okay. Um, oh, it's green. Okay. I'm Lita Shapiro. I live in Ashland, and I'm here to speak to the resolution to implement new salary schedules. First, there were threats and debates about increasing fees and adding a new parks fee. We were told implementing these fees would avoid cuts in services. And to be frank, that was not true. For months, we were told that salary increases were included in the budget. And it appears that's not to be true either. So now, having implemented both higher fees and cuts in services before this council, is a resolution for a new salary schedule that would raise some management salaries ten to nineteen thousand a year. This is the wrong time to do this. This is not the time for making cuts in order to pay for raises. That time is long gone. That time was when the budget was being developed, not after it was approved. Now is the time to say yes to union contracts, but a resounding no to the management raises. The current salaries compare well to other cities of our size. Please reschedule this resolution to February 27 for the next biennial, leaving time to implement efficiencies and a finally sustainable budget, which I have yet to see happen. A yes vote shows you place no priority for either maintaining essential services or establishing a sustainable budget. Please show us some plain common sense.
Thank you. Alex Sol?
Excuse me, let me get myself settled here. Hello, good evening. Uh, I come here tonight, uh, not in protest of public workers being paid fairly. I come here tonight in protest of a system that increasingly feels disconnected from the very public that it is meant to serve. I'd like to start with the obvious. No one here denies that city staff, including management, deserve to be compensated. You carry real responsibilities and work under pressure, and they deserve respect. But with respect comes the expectation of accountability, moral clarity, especially in how public money is spent. Right now, we are watching splash time for our children get cut, we are paying higher utility fees, which we were told would preserve parks and rec services, only to see those services slashed anyway, and we speak of respect for all Ashlanders. Ms. Mayor, which I apologize for the disruption, but you can understand how we're feeling. Only, i- i- we are watching tran- uh, transit access shrink, rents skyrocket, and employees in this town living three or four to an apartment or sleeping in their cars. And the biggest priority that the city manager can come up with right now is a hundred and twenty-seven-thousand-dollar compensation study that could have been used to fund childcare? I never want to hear of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand ever being spent, of taxpayer money in the age of AI and modern technology. I spent an hour doing a compensation study for the underpaid people of this community using this cellphone and two days of hard work for these people that you are supposed to represent. This is a charade. This compensation study was not necessary at this moment in time. There are far too many problems that are facing this community that justify now increasing our, uh, decreasing our services and increasing your upward mobility, sending tax dollars upward. Where is the compensation study for the community? Where is the compensation study for the Rite Aid worker? Now, I'm not saying you can fix every single problem, but I think your priorities are misguided. Excuse me. The community sees, oh wait, oh, whatever. You know what I want to conclude with? Show us respect. Show us respect. Show these people respect. You think we want to be here, taking our time out of our life to watch what you guys are doing? Come on. You guys got to do better than this. You have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Patton?
I'm Gail Patton. I live in Ashland. You people have the responsibility to do the right thing for the citizens of Ashland. In this economy, when our utility fees are rising, they're going up, and services are being reduced, it is absolutely not appropriate to give raises to upper management. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Adams?
We have all been here before. Good evening, everyone. I understand there are concerns about the proposed compensation adjustments for our non-union and management employees, particularly regarding the fiscal impact. It's natural to question new spending, but I'm here to tell you why adopting this resolution is not a cost, but a critical investment in Ashland's future. Some argue these changes are too expensive, but let's look at the real cost of doing nothing. For over a decade, Ashland has neglected a comprehensive review of its pay system. The McGrath study confirms we are undercompensating our dedicated staff. What does this mean? It means we're losing talented employees to other cities, like Medford, that offer competitive wages. When experienced staff leave, we face increased turnover, the loss of vital institutional knowledge, and the significant expense of constantly recruiting and training new hires. These hidden costs in terms of service disruption and inefficiency will far outweigh any upfront investment in fair compensation. This resolution is a preventative measure, protecting our city from far greater financial and operational burdens down the line. Another argument suggests that public employees already have sufficient benefits. However, this perspective overlooks the critical value these individuals bring to our community every single day. These are the people who keep our water clean, maintain our roads, ensure our public safety, and manage the essential functions of our city government. When we fail to offer competitive pay, we compromise our ability to attract and retain the best and the brightest for these crucial roles. This isn't about excessive raises. It's about paying a fair, market-aligned wage, so we can continue to deliver the high-quality services Ashland residents expect. And finally, some question the timing or the need for such a comprehensive overhaul. The truth is, this isn't a rash decision. It's the result of a thorough independent study that highlights systemic issues developed over more than 10 years. The proposed eight-step salary schedule and standardized adjustments are designed to create a transparent, equitable, and sustainable compensance, compensation framework for the long term. This is a strategic move to modernize our city's human capital strategy, ensuring we can effectively manage our workforce and provide consistent, reliable services for years to come. In conclusion, adopting this resolution isn't just about employee pay. It's about safeguarding Ashland's operational capacity, attracting top talent, and ensuring the continued quality of our public services. It's a smart, necessary investment in the future of our city.
Thank you. George Kramer?
George Kramer, I can still afford to live in Ashland. Um, everybody loves staff. Everybody wants to see staff compensated fairly. You delude yourself if you think that the only reason we have trouble attracting people or keeping staff is because of what we pay them. Every time you put your finger on the scale to support staff, which I understand why you do, and that's laudable, I either get less services or have to pay more. And we are reaching a point where the city's budget and the city's stable population and stable tax base cannot keep up with your spending. We need to rethink all of this. We need to do it in a comprehensive way. You should have done it during the budget process. Right now, at this particular time in our country, where people are paying too much money for food, and they're paying too much money for rent, and they wonder about their healthcare, and federal employees are losing their jobs, you prioritizing staff salaries is unseemly. It's rude to the people you represent. Don't do it. Put it off until a budget. Tell me what you're going to cut to pay for these costs, to keep the staff. Tell me we have the staff we need. I've heard you talk tonight about right-sizing staff. I think that's great. I think we should do that. I think simply deciding to compensate staff more now, because we haven't done it for a while, is inappropriate. I don't get a cola. None of these people get colas. We live in the same world as staff and you. We're all facing increased economic pressure, just like everybody else. When you think only of staff, it's hard not to think you're not thinking of the citizens. And I ask you to do that. I ask you to delay this motion. I ask you to take up Counselor Bloom's recommendation of bifurcating this, looking at who really needs these pay increases and these colas, and who can wait for the budget. Not because I don't think they're doing a good job, but because we can't afford this. And we need you to sit, to draw the line of what we can afford and what we can't. And this is your opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of staff? Molly, can you put the, um, the separated, uh, motion suggestions up for us, please? Okay. So we will take these one by one, starting with the IBEW Electric Union. If there are no further questions about this particular union's contract, the floor is open for a motion. Counsel Kaplan?
I move to approve the three-year labor agreement with the IBEW Electric Union.
Second.
Counsel Kaplan?
I, this was a, this was a, uh, labor negotiation undertaken in good faith with our union, uh, based upon a thorough analysis that I think, uh, got, got us to, to a good point, um, with the new structure. Uh, I think it's a, I think it is absolutely the way to go. And, uh, I think, I don't, I don't think there should be any question about, um, approving this, this labor contract.
Go ahead, um, speak to the motion.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Um, this was fully vetted, negotiated, um, back and forth in good faith, and I absolutely support this motion.
Counsel Dukane?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to speak to this motion. And, um, before I speak to this, I would like to thank everyone who came forward to speak this evening. And something that, um, I too appreciate our staff and everything that our staff does, but it seems to me that everybody is focusing on the staff. I'm focusing on the people who have to pay the staff, the hard-working people of Ashland. Something I did a little research about a week and a half ago, and I saw that the U.S. Census Bureau, the median annual income for one person who lives in Ashland is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Take that and divide it by twelve, and you get three thousand, one hundred, twenty dollars and eighty-three cents. Then divide it by two, and you get one thousand, five hundred, sixty dollars and forty-one cents that this person bring, makes every two weeks. I took a look at the average cost for a one-bedroom apartment in Ashland is one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars per month. Subtract that from the one thousand, five hundred, sixty dollars and forty-one cents, and the person has four hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-one cents left. Then you subtract that by the gas, food, car insurance, childcare if needed, and not to forget the progressive utility rates that some of our citizens have brought up this evening. And let's not forget about the full-time minimum wage in worker here in Ashland that makes thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, and the seniors on fixed income. Forty-seven percent of the people in Ashland are renters, and many property owners are barely hanging on, while Ashland has a fourteen-point-two-percent poverty rate. And these are the people that we want to pay for these salaries. I don't support this, and I don't support any of them.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Sherelle?
Yes.
Dale?
No.
Bloom?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dukane?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to the second, uh, uh, union contract with the IBEW Clerical Technical Union. The floor, if there are no additional questions, the floor is open for a motion. Counsel, uh, Hanson?
I'm happy to move to approve the three-year labor agreement with IBW Clerical and Technical Union.
Second.
Counsel Hanson?
Uh, again, this was a collective bargaining in good faith, um, and I appreciate all that went into it, and I support this, and I thank staff for all of their hard work.
Counsel Bloom?
Yeah, I concur with Counselor Hanson, and as, uh, from my previous comments as well, negotiating in good faith.
Any further discussion?
Yes, please.
Counsel Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just make a couple comments. Uh, I think this would be timely. And this applies to, if any additional motions as well, so I'm only going to do this once. Tonight, I'm going to approach this differently and begin with what I'm not considering in my vote. First, I am not considering the idea of framing this as an us-versus-them issue, implying that some care about the city finances, while others, including our staff, do not. That kind of thinking is divisive and unproductive. Our staff are committed and hard-working, questioning their integ- Our staff are committed and hardworking, questioning their integrity or suggesting anyone holds moral authority over what others deserve, only undermines trust and weakens our community. We've seen what happens across the country when communities embrace suspicion and polarization. I won't be a part of that, and I won't lead from a place of fear or blame. Second, I am not considering direct comparisons between Ashland's compensation structure and those of neighboring cities. While such comparisons are frequently used, they're often flawed. Cities vary widely in their structure, level of services, and staffing models. What works or costs less in one city might not be applicable here. More importantly, Ashland offers so many positive intangibles that contribute rear value and quality of life that can only be found here. These cannot be measured on a spreadsheet, but they matter greatly. Third, I reject the notion that voting no on this resolution or any of these items/motions is a vote of no confidence in staff. This is simply not true. I know just how much compensation is a sensitive topic. For many who work so hard every day, it can be incredibly difficult to emotionally decouple an hourly wage from self-worth. I recognize that past deliberations around compensation were delivered by previous iterations of this body in ways that were dismissive and demoralizing. I have zero doubt that this council wants nothing more than to break from that history. We can and must have this conversation with honesty, clarity, and respect. This brings me to the core reason for my vote. Let me be absolutely clear. I have a deep respect and appreciation for our city staff. I continue to witness firsthand the professionalism and commitment that they bring to their work every single day, often under pressure, and more often with fewer resources than they need. I know that the proposed union negotiations and the management resolution before us tonight are based on compensation and classification study with the goal of right sizing in order to stay competitive. I understand that. Of course, we want to attract the proverbial best and brightest, and I have yet to encounter any successful organization that actively recruits or settles for just average. But we want to be, if we want to be a true employer of choice, then we must be looking beyond short-term fixes, and we need to create the kind of financial stability that allows people to thrive in their jobs here, not just for two years, but for 20. That is how we stay truly competitive. That takes hard, strategic work. It takes serious trade-offs and serious people that are willing to come together to do serious work. This work is painful, necessary, and overdue. My fundamental reservations are based around the fact that we have not engaged in comprehensive long-term modeling, financial modeling. And to be clear, budgeting is not the same as financial planning. We haven't looked at what this decision will mean five to 10 or more years from now. A comp and class study is a tool, not a mandate. It provides useful data, but it does not make the decision for us. My concern is that this proposal is built on a fragile budget, one balanced not through new, balanced not through new sustainable revenue but through increased fees to residents, service reductions, and other budget modifications, which may have unintended impact, for which I have no idea of their severity. That's not the strong foundation for a permanent financial commitment that our employees and our citizens deserve. What may feel supportive today could result in real harm tomorrow for our employees in this community, and that is definitely not the mark of an employer of choice. My vote tonight is not a vote of disrespect, displeasure, or lack of confidence at all, and I graciously accept any challenge to prove otherwise. Rather, it's just the opposite, is a vote for stability, resilience, and the compassionate care and concern for the long-term well-being of our employees and our city citizens, and I believe current and future staff in our entire community deserve a clear vision and thoughtful, informed, sustained, sustainable action. Thank you.
Any further deliberation? Roll call, please. Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
No.
Sherelle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Okay, we move now to the three-year labor agreement with Launa Labor Union. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, I'll open the floor for a motion. Counselor Kaplan?
I move to approve the three-year labor agreement with the Launa Labor Union.
Second.
Counselor Kaplan?
Same, same thoughts with the, with the first and the second. These are, this is a negotiation in good faith, based upon sound financials in our, in our city, not just at this present time, but looking forward with sound fund balances, sound reserves, and a AA3 credit rating, which is probably higher than any other city in, in the valley. So I'm happy to support this union. It's certainly something that our, our workers need.
Counselor Sherelle?
Yeah, definitely. Easy to support this. I spend a lot of days in the trenches and a lot of miles on our streets, and I encourage people to look in the holes when you drive down the street or you see workers. This is the heart and lungs of our city, water, sewer, power. How do we not support these people? This is an easy vote for me, and I plan to support it. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Sherelle?
Yes.
Dale?
No.
Bloom?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Okay. We move now to Resolution Number 2025-22. Are there any questions? Counselor Duquesne?
No.
Oh, you had a question?
No, I didn't.
Okay. The floor is open for a motion, and I have a tie. Let's, um... Let's take a break for the next five minutes. Let's get a, because this is going to open up a much longer conversation. We haven't had a break since 5:15, properly. Let's take a break, and we'll come back. Please be back in your seats at 7:45.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're on.
It's okay. I do want Counselor Dale to come back, so we'll give him a moment to return.
I know, I know. But...
Are there any final questions regarding Resolution Number 2025-22?
So I have a question. If this council were to decide in some fashion to delay this resolution, what would be the practical implications of a delay?
One of them would be... I mean, there are several. I'm trying. Just getting my thoughts together. There are benefits tied to the resolution that we contribute that have interest attached. So there's a potential where they are losing out on interest on those benefits.
Would we be liable for that interest?
Yes. So that's an additional cost to the city that we have not discussed. And that would be for everyone that this would affect.
Any others?
I think just inherently with doing any sort of retro payments back to a date, that's difficult because of things like this, because a lot of the payroll taxes, the HR VBA, there's a lot of things tied to the wage that we then have to calculate. So staff time becomes kind of consumed with all those calculations. So just with that.
And these would go back to July 1st, is that correct? At whatever point the contracts, the previous contract ended on June 30th, correct?
Correct.
And so whatever a contract would be, at whatever point it would be negotiated, would be retroactive to July 1st.
Correct.
And that's when all of the adjustments and calculations and things would have to be made. Okay. Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, question to that point. I guess I'm not understanding the issue with the kind of practical problems that you're identifying, because if we were to say, take one single classification that's listed in Appendix A and just said that we are not moving them or we're tabling, but when it comes back, we don't want to move them forward on the new classification, they would just stay on the existing classification that they're on now. And the same rules would apply, the same procedures for step increases, for COLAs, all that could be baked in. There's no, it's not like they're just now, all of a sudden they disappear.
So you're saying retain the old salary schedule?
If that's what council decided, or that's a conversation that we have, is that if somebody were left out of a future resolution to say move forward with the new classifications, and we decided that one of those classes did not move forward, they would just stay on the same, the existing one now, the same salary schedule now, correct?
I just have a question for a point of clarification. Are you talking about moving different employees into different schedules altogether?
What I'm suggesting is, and I think I've been quite open about this in this meeting, is that I believe that there are a few in Exhibit A, Appendix A, that there are a few classifications that I certainly have interest in moving forward with the new schedule and everything that's laid out with the COLAs, and that there are maybe other classifications that we just leave in the existing agreement, the existing classification. So it wouldn't affect step increases that are already planned out, wouldn't affect any existing contracts that they have. Of course, it wouldn't negate those, and it wouldn't affect the COLAs. So...
Right. I think I wrote you an email, and I think one of the issues you could potentially run into, and that's why I mentioned bringing in staff, was that you could have pay equity complaints if someone has a similarly situated job and you bump them up, and another person in a different department, because of their classification, did not change, because that's my understanding of the classification study also, is it redefines their position. And so you could have equity issues to admin staff essentially doing the same work in different departments, getting paid differently. This, I mean, this is a discussion that needed to happen last night or at a study session where we could sit down and break the time. I mean, I can't, I can't in good conscience come up with all the legal liability that we'd be opened up to in that. So I was strongly suggesting against verbally doing that.
No, and I was hoping we would. I mean, unfortunately, we didn't get time, because we are limited in study session how much time we have to really work through all of this. And I mean, that is one of my concerns, is again, we're trying to kind of push something through, and we're not even looking at what alternatives are, options. We're not able to deliberate that.
Did you have any other questions?
No, no.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah. So I'm understanding that everybody currently is on a salary scale. All of these 92 employees in this nonrepresented class are on a salary scale. What is the normal date of step increases for those employees?
Their date of hire, and it's a 5% increase for most.
So they get a 5% increase. I noticed that in the table, that the current is a 5% increase. And so it's date of hire. So the farther we go out, the more likely we're triggering, I mean, maybe we've already triggered some individuals that have gotten their 5% increase in July because we didn't replace the scale?
So everything's been on hold, because the management resolution has been on hold. So no one has, so it's, this ended June 30th. So no one has received their step increase July 1 post.
But we're in violation then, so we're technically in violation on that, because we should be giving the 5% step increase, not the 3% step increases that these are talking about, at the anniversary date of hire. So anyone who has met that date before we actually approve this, if we don't do that, we're in violation, is that right?
They're at will employees, so they will make an argument for inequity, and they will have a strong argument. However, it's not a violation, because they don't, we are not contractually bound.
Right.
But the resolution expired, and so we're operating, it's, I should say, my understanding is it's put on hold, and it will be backdated. So what we've been telling those employees who have brought those issues forward is that we're working on it, and it'll be prorated.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any final questions? Okay. The floor is open for a motion. Counselor Hanson?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-22 and repeal and replace the resolution of the same title.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hanson?
We've talked about this a lot. I don't have anything substantive to add. Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, we have talked about it. We've had a session, a business meeting a few weeks ago, and we delayed the decision until tonight. We had a study session yesterday, which I think was quite useful, providing a lot of additional information. And I think we've heard some pretty, again, some new information today with respect to this. I think that the same logic applies to this group of individuals as applies to the other individuals who were placed in a new salary scale in order to update our organization. That's always a kind of a bit of a challenging situation, because some people think they should have gotten the COLA, and they got only a smaller increase. And some people are chafing, frankly, that they didn't get the increase that they thought they should have gotten, and they're maybe moving around, looking around for other jobs elsewhere. I think this is something that we know, that we need to do. This is something that is within our city's short-term financial capability and our long-term foreseeable financial capability. I agree that we don't have a crystal ball, know everything that's coming. But we do know, we get quarterly reports of our finances in this city, and we know the status of every single one of our funds. We know that every single one of our funds has increased its fund balance from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. And we know that we've got reserves. We've got, as I said earlier, we were just confirmed with Moody's for a AA3 credit rating. No, obviously, something could happen, and things are happening that we need to prepare for. But there is no reasonable reason to penalize our employees because we can't take a decision on equitable pay.
Further discussion? Counselor Sherrell?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Kaplan just said, and I'd also like to thank all the citizens that sent very direct and firm emails and brought up really good points and asked really good questions. And I had to go back into the data time and time again and ask better questions to myself, and also during the study session yesterday. And I have to admit that the data is not perfect. I did the best I could to poke some holes in it. I'd also like to see us be as creative to bring cuts to the table when they're for wages, as they are when they're for needed services for people. I think that's important, and I think we can do better as a city there. I'd like to support this. I think we need strong leadership. One thing I want to focus on is a slide that we saw yesterday. As a long-term thinker, we're looking at the graph as it goes down over time. I don't know that 3% annual increases between steps is even relevant with inflation that we've seen and the devaluation of the dollar. I worry about that. I worry that in five years, we want, we do want long-term forecasting, but our workforce is going to look drastically different in five years. The marketplace is going to be drastically different in two years. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and I think we can afford to have the best leadership. We need to promote good leadership. We need to keep good leadership. The average person stays here about eight years, and we can't afford to lose legacy every eight years. And the two ways we get people in the public sector is we give them wages, and we give them benefits. And people are paid for two things, what they know and what they're willing to do. And a lot of people took fire up here in our staff positions, and like, you can go be a roofer and make way more than you can make up here to take these spears. So thank you for the direct emails. We have openings at the city. If you think you're overpaid and overcompensated, we ask you to come work for us and help us, and I will be strongly supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the intent behind this resolution, particularly in supporting our frontline and nonrepresented staff. But approving this package in full, particularly the management components, without first completing our strategic and financial planning, is premature. We are actively considering service level reviews, office consolidations, budget restructuring, and long-term financial modeling. Those decisions should inform compensation policy, not follow it. What's more, is that there are still outstanding questions around future contracts, and this resolution would be drastically affected by that, making it potentially obsolete in terms of what our financial forecasts look like. I was hoping that we could find compromise and move forward in part. Unfortunately, that doesn't seem to be the case. I firmly believe that good government and lasting policy that benefits everybody in this community is done through compromise. And I don't believe that we're going to be able to achieve that today. I hope that in the future we will. I will absolutely be voting no on this.
Further discussion? Counselor Duquesne?
Mayor. I just want to kind of echo what I said earlier. As we move forward, we are in a very precarious situation, locally, state, and federal. And moving forward, if we do not keep our eyes on the people who live here, because the people are the city, we then have to pay these prices, these rates, these salaries, these taxes, that continue to happen just as life itself is happening. And there's only so much that an individual can do. We are not broadening our tax base. We are not helping our people directly in any way that are business owners. And if we don't start to think out of the box and realize that the people of Ashland are who we work for, I think we will find ourselves in even a worse position. So I, once again, I just have to give a shout out to the people of Ashland. I appreciate everyone's service, and I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
So I've been on this council as we've moved through several different budgeting processes. And each time, we have asked the question, how are we in terms of competing? We've been looking at our turnover rate, and we've been asking this question of how competitive are we? And at the end of the day, that's what I believe we are talking about here. The fact is, we have to engage in a labor market, a competitive labor market. And we happen to be a very complex town for the size that we are. I tell people, we're not that much less complex than big cities like Portland and Salem, because the people behind this dais have appropriately kept control of our utilities and have made sure that the community is managing the systems that it depends upon. The council directed the staff to complete the comp and class study, so that we would have the information that we needed to make sure that our wage tables weren't what was causing essentially some of our turnover. And what we found out, and it's a difficulty of timing, but what we found out was that we had fallen quite a ways behind in spite of the COLAs that we had put in place with the last set of contracts, because we knew we had fallen behind in some fashion. We were trying to correct for some of that, also trying to address the inflation that people are dealing with everywhere. It is unfortunate that all of this is coming to bear at a time when our nation's reality is so chaotic. There are tough times ahead, we know that. We know that for our community, and that is actually why I support this. Because when a community is faced with difficult times, you don't want to be in the middle of significant leadership transitions. You want steady hands at the wheel, you want experienced hands at the wheel, you want people who know what they're doing and are not learning their job. In this resolution, I've heard mostly concerns about the staff leadership and whether or not they should get what is considered to be a raise. But for most of them, it is lining up in the same space as a cost of living adjustment. And for the ones that it isn't, we have to ask ourselves the question of how competitive do we feel we need to be with the leadership of the systems that support this community? So it is a difficult time, because in this case, which is different than it had been in previous years with negotiating labor agreements when in the middle of a budget process, this year, we're making this major correction across the entire city system. But it's a correction that this council asked for, and it is a correction that we will have to make at some point. And the question is, do we do it now, or while we have this information? Or do we wait a couple more years potentially and do it after we have, after we've had more turnover? So to me, this is both a short-term and a long-term investment in the health and the stability and the resilience of our city. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
No.
Dale?
No.
Sherrell?
Yes.
In the case of a tie, mayor votes?
Yes. So that takes us to the end of that section of our agenda.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's a vote with no, with no debate, right?
It's going to be a vote with no debate, yeah. So roll call, I guess, in this case?
Roll call, please, Alyssa? Sherrell?
No.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Kaplan?
No.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Got distracted, sorry.
No.
Sorry, Graham, no.
We will carry on with our agenda. We have the city manager report, and then we'll move on to other business from council members.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The city recorder's office has successfully shredded over 400 boxes of records that we no longer needed and cleared out a storage unit. So we'll no longer have to pay for that, and we continue to work on our records retention policy to ensure that this does not happen again moving forward. We are in the process of pushing out grant funding for our childcare grant program. The YMCA was awarded $50,000, Avery Street $30,000, and Mountain Star $20,000. So those checks will be in the mail probably this week. So that is exciting. Just a reminder to the community to continue to make sure that you're signed up for Jackson Alerts. We've had some nice weather today, but always good to be informed in case that changes. We do have an agreement for a cooling shelter with the Methodist Church in place if we need it, which we appreciate their partnership this year. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Any updates from council liaison positions?
Counselor Hanson?
Parks is going to be bringing up the subject of East Main Park. There is ideas on the table there, so neighbors will want to pay attention to any kind of public notice meeting that might be happening here shortly. Just a heads up there.
Any other items? Okay, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.